Welcome to you. All right, is everybody here? Yep, we're good. Anne, thank you for being here. And everybody else. We're gonna open up. Time is seven o'clock, 7:02. I call the meeting the order. And on the agenda, all right, everybody's got the agenda. This is an administrative session for discussion only. We do not have any specific items that I know of just now to vote on unless something else comes up during our discussion. The items that we have on our agenda, there are four items, four properties that are, and I'm gonna explain it the way I just learned it as well. They are on our agenda because technically they are part of our agenda even though they are up for public hearing on September 27th. So we do not need to take these off the table or discuss, and I would probably advise we wait to the public hearing. That is 443 King Street, 1166 Bartram Avenue. Again, the Bartram Avenue, Merrill Anderson Property, and then 900 Access Road. Does anybody have any specific reason that they need to discuss any of those before? Good, then we'll move on. Approval of minutes, August 30th.
Oh, excuse me, Council Chair. Do I have to say that I can do King Street because I've listened to the tapes from the first one prior?
You can do King Street.
Okay, so I will officially?
Be part of that.
Be part of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 30th.
Motion by Mr. Posner. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, Chair approves. All right, we have a pretty hefty work agenda with some discussion on it, and let's take it through one at a time. And we're gonna begin with the 200 East Main Street Popeyes. You all did discuss on the 30th. When I was away on vacation, Lynda led the chair of that. And during that, reading the minutes and everything, you wisely decided not to appeal. So the next step for us is to discuss how we want to move forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Hibansky for a little bit of guidance here with some suggestions to see what we might want to consider or look at, if you don't mind.
So I assume everybody had a chance to take a look at the plans that were submitted by Attorney Florick on the 30th. This is basically our opportunity, or the commission's opportunity, I should say, to impose any reasonable conditions in attachment with the approval of the project. I know that based on some of the discussion that we had last week, there was maybe some concerns as to the daily operation of the-
During construction.
-of the site during construction and safety. I think some of that stuff is implied, but it's always, we can always attach a condition. And I know that, I have a few notes. One of them could be that the site be fenced to prevent people from wandering or getting into the site, and that a separate condition could be that the construction does not interrupt or limit the service or access to any other tenants on site. I would imagine that the developer has already has this worked out with the property owner, but, you know, it can't hurt to add something like that if the commission chooses. After comparing the plan, the revised plan with the original plan, there isn't a whole lot, at least from my perspective, I'll open it up to you, to your discussion, the two things that I thought about were they could put, they could, the applicant could plant additional shade trees along the northwest landscaping island. There doesn't seem to be a lot of shade there, and in a parking lot, you get a heat island effect, lots of asphalt, and it gets really hot. So anytime that you can provide more shade, I think this is the opportunity to maybe ask them to plant a couple more native shade trees. Also, you could also ask them to maximize any plantings. Some of the planting areas did look a little light in the landscaping, so this would be an opportunity to ask them to do that.
Signage? Any additional signage? Sorry. Any additional signage that you think might help in terms of traffic direction?
I don't have any, but the Department of Transportation is gonna have hefty requirements on them for signage. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Because it does require an administrative decision through DOT based on the traffic that these type of developments do generate. They can't get a building permit until they actually get their administrative decision from DOT. So at that point, I would leave it to the engineers at DOT to recommend the proper signage.
So if we just simply said, per whatever the recommendations of DOT for signage, that would be sufficient, correct?
Right. And that was one of the conditions that I had mentioned prior at the last meeting, was that they do need their OSTA administrative approval through DOT, and that we recommend they follow, I mean, they have to do it anyways, but we recommend that they adhere to any conditions from DOT.
Mr. Posner, any thoughts? I'll go down the list.
I have a question. I thought there was supposed to be like a little walkway from the sidewalk into that parking area.
From East Main?
From East Main Street.
Because it's a sidewalk, but doesn't show anything coming in.
On the revised plan?
On the original, too, I think.
I don't know.
I thought there was like a little walkway.
Are you recommending that you think we need one?
Take a look.
Oh, no, I mean, people are gonna try to get the Popeyes from Walmart. They're gonna walk over, and then they're gonna go up this little access road. I thought there was supposed to be a little inlet, wasn't there?
But that wasn't a walkway. That was, the only thing I saw was just markings on the asphalt, not an actual walkway.
So if somebody's walking from Walmart over there-
This is the walkway.
And where's this way? But what's, where's this?
That's it.
This is the walkway that they would basically cross over onto a sidewalk over to here to get inside.
That's it.
So that's not to interfere with the traffic queuing here.
Okay, that's what I just said to him, because they moved.
But it was just, it was just markings in the street, right? Not an actual walkway.
Because originally, it was supposed to be over here, and they were gonna have it over here.
This is what she's talking about, right?
But there's gonna be signage, I hope, to tell them where to go.
This is the one they were talking about here. I guess originally before the-
Walking over here and then trying to-
I guess it was here, they haven't moved over to here.
Yeah.
So that's not to interfere with any of this.
Yeah, but this is safer the way they've done it.
And that's safety, I understand. That's, that's the better way to do it.
It looks like it's safer where they have moved it, so I think that that is a better place.
But I think there should be signage telling them pedestrians which way to go because the pedestrian across from Walmart is gonna go right up the law access road, walking.
They probably will do that anyhow, but would that be part of the DOT if they put those kinds of pedestrians sideways?
We have something that's that specific. I think you can certainly say the site shall provide proper wayfinding for pedestrians. Wayfinding is a way to say just signage, signs for pedestrians or other patrons.
And why don't we consider that as one of the things we want to add, is they should provide signage for pedestrian direction, walkway.
Is this, excuse me, is this print carved in stone, or is this still in smoke with Attorney Flor J.?
The plans that were presented at the last meeting?
Yeah, which you gave me.
For the most part.
Right now, what you have officially is the original plan that was presented at the time the original application was filed. That's what was approved by the court. Now, after the approval, after the court remanded it back to the zoning commission for the imposition of reasonable conditions, Attorney Willinger, on behalf of his client, presented the plans that you have in front of you now, which he suggested would be reasonable conditions that the zoning commission could impose, which would be-
Acceptable?
Acceptable to the zoning commission, and which would be better from the standpoint of the criteria set forth in the special case and site plan objectives. So that's what you have in front of you now. Officially, what's been approved is what was way back when. So when you ask whether this is carved in stone, I don't think it's carved in stone, but it indicates a willingness of what they would be willing to do, what they think are reasonable conditions that this commission could impose upon that approval.
So we would still need to make a motion to accept these plans with anything in addition that we would feel is necessary?
That is correct. The conditions to be imposed would be the site plan as shown on those plans, together with any additional conditions that emanate from this meeting.
Is there a better?
Well, I think Commissioner Peppin picked out a really good point here, the way this walkway is, and it really should just go back the other way. I mean, if this is not carved in stone, this could all move over five feet, and you can get a sidewalk right on that one side over here on the access road.
They have to cross over while they're getting-
Yeah, that's the reason why they moved it. I don't know.
No, because they're-
Here you come in here.
You don't, you don't want them to cross over the, while the cars are coming around.
No, it's fine. But the other thing is on the access road, does it, is there shrubbery there? Because what's gonna stop people from rubbernecking, going down like this there and hitting another car head on? Because that happens all the time. I mean, is there enough hedge weight there? Is there any shrubs there? Because it doesn't have a ledge, and I couldn't find.
And they're not cutting in anymore to this turn where the original turn is, am I right?
From the accessway?
Yeah.
From the accessway into the shopping center itself? No, the court was pretty specific about that, that the original access, this accessway meets all standards and criteria, so-
I guess he's never pulled in.
They're not, they're not changing that at all.
Okay.
If you've got something more specific, because I, are you okay with the walkway? Isn't it, because where I see it right now seems to, yeah, it seems better. I do agree you need some more shrubage.
There's no way for them to get into, once they crossed here, there's no way for them to really get to where they want to get to, I feel like.
No.
There's just no room with the order board here, and then very little room on the other side.
Over here, is this just gonna be a curve or like a guardrail? Just a curve, not a guardrail. It's probably better without a guardrail because somebody's car is gonna get scraped, so. You can't protect the pedestrian from themselves on everything, but we can try to encourage them not to break the law if we can.
And I think proper signage certainly helps with that, you know, showing people where they need to cross.
Mr. Juliana, anything else you want to add?
I'm just wondering if those are guardrails along the access road all the way into where you turn in? You know what I mean?
These over here.
I'm trying to find a, yeah, trying to find a ledge on that.
There's not, there's, there is not guardrails now.
Does it say property lines? What, is this property line?
I don't think, I don't think those are guardrails.
It's not.
Those are light bulbs?
The guardrail is only on the southernmost accessway around-
Yeah.
-the queue, around the drive-thru.
I think those are-
The lane south of the drive-thru. That's the only place that there, that there, there's a guardrail. You can see it right here.
Oh, yeah, guardrail, yeah. Because I go shopping there, and I know that there isn't any over here.
So it basically goes from the walkway all the way over to here.
Right, which would discourage people from trying to run across.
Exactly.
Originally, weren't they having parking on this south, like they were gonna-
Correct.
Are they still doing that?
Not in this plan.
This was the revised plan, and I think everyone thought was incorporated some of the comments from the previous-
It's just gonna be on the side, say, in front of the immediate help here.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Most of the parking is gonna be on the side of the immediate help.
Oh, down here.
Because this is where the stores are.
Right. That's down here.
Parking is gonna be here, a little bit over here, like it is now.
Mm-hmm.
And then some over here, right, along that access road, right?
Mm-hmm. It'll fit. It's tight.
It's tight.
It's very tight. But at this point, it's the best plan that we can come with. Ms. Baker, do you have any thoughts you want to add to it? Sure.
It's gonna be like the McDonald's at Molly Lake.
Yes, it is.
Where you're real tight.
Real tight. Well-
With pedestrians, because there's not a lot.
There's not a lot. But the other side of this that we have to put in consideration, the property owner of that complex has given them permission. They must be aware of the impact it has on their parking spaces and how tight it is. They have deemed it to be acceptable to them. So it's, it's something we have to consider. We're just trying to make it safe for the pedestrians and the cars as best we can. Anything else? All right, we're gonna need a motion to accept the plan as presented, and with the additional conditions. You want to read through the conditions?
I just want to read them one more time.
I'm gonna make the motion.
So the first condition is to provide clear signage for pedestrian crossing along East Main Street to gain access to the site. Provide additional shade trees and landscaping in areas where further plantings may be applied. Construction shall not interrupt or limit service, limit service or access to the site.
Maximize landscape, you want to add that to the-
Sure.
-shade trees?
Increase, probably not max, increase.
Increase.
Okay.
And we said signage for pedestrian.
He did have that in there. That's the motion.
One more thing.
One more thing?
Don't forget the basic premise is to accept the, the plans you have in front of you-
We got that.
...as subject to these additional conditions.
That was the, that was the first premise. We just wanted to review the additional pieces, so.
So we make a motion to accept?
The exist, the plans as submitted as of today.
On, on 8:30? Were these submitted on 8:30?
On 8:30.
New plans on 8:30?
Yes, I don't, I don't have a copy of those plans in front of me, but if they have a specific title, you can read that into the record.
Well, before the motion's made for the record-
The date is 8/13 for the plans, plans to date at 8/13.
Before the motion's made for the record, what I do want to say is, I voted no to appeal this in court, because I thought it would be too costly to the town and the taxpayers. I think it's a terrible location for this project. And I'm speaking on behalf of many, many, many constituents in my district, District Two. They do not want it. It is terrible for the district. It's gonna cause many traffic and safety concerns, no matter what sign you put in, what walkway you put in, what sidewalk you put in, or what kind of traffic pattern you're trying to tell them they need to go. It is going to cause problems. You will see it in the future once this is built. But there's really nothing we can do, our hands are tied, but that needs to be on record. Mark my words, this will cause problems in the future, and my district does not want it.
Noted.
And I, I agree with Scott, too. I mean, I, I agree that we shouldn't have, you know, gone with an appeal again, but I, I really think it is a bad space. And I don't think that the zoning commission doesn't want Popeyes here, doesn't want Popeyes in Stratford. That's not our, that wasn't what our intent was. Did we, we even thought about the place where the new gym is, but that place is crowded now. But I, I just think this is a bad spot.
It's the wrong location, Lynda, right? Wrong location.
Totally. I, I remember when we first denied it, that I, I pulled into that parking lot, and who was standing in front of Stop &amp; Shop was chairperson Phillips, and I said to her, "I can't believe they really want this here."
Mm-hmm, I remember.
I, I tell you, I went to Stop &amp; Shop last Friday night. I tried to pull into access road, there was like five cars behind me.
Let me, let me state it this way. As a zoning commission, the prior zoning commission, and this zoning commission, we have done our best to state on the record what is best for the town and what we think are best for the taxpayers. And we have done our jobs, I think, admirably. Given the conditions that have come back from the court, we are now doing the next best thing we can for the taxpayers and the residents by trying to find the most workable solution. But I don't, I think it's generally agreed by the original denial that it is still not our most favorable location. Is that said well?
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I agree with the two commissioners to my left, and there's plenty other places. I mean, we have blighted property that they could have looked at, that somebody could have pushed on, but it's, it's water under the bridge now. And I, I have a, I have one, you're gonna love this Attorney Florick. I would like to see him put escrow money away, so when the business fails, they got money to rip the thing down, so we don't have another thing to look at.
You mean another empty building in Stratford? Go figure.
It's been done in New York. They make it in there.
But not in Connecticut.
Not in Connecticut.
I don't wish-
Don't use that as a paraphrase.
I don't wish that they fail, but I do wish that-
No.
No.
And is there any way that if we see that things aren't going right, that we tell them they have to change something? I don't know, Jay. No, that's it. Okay.
No.
Okay.
Although if they don't-
Like if there's more accident-
If they don't comply with the conditions of the approval, obviously, that's a zoning enforcement mechanism. That's not for this board to deal with, but that's for the zoning enforcement officer.
Well, what Commissioner Peppin just said goes back to what I was referring to, that they should have money in escrow. Hey!
Well, the other thing is, is I believe that if we find that there is an increase in accidents or other vehicle-related issues, that becomes also a traffic issue that we can take it back to there. So there are some remedies. But at this point, and I want to move forward, so we have other things to do, I'd like to call for a vote. We have a motion.
We need a second.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana, you're a good soul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no.
Anybody? No?
No.
One opposed. Chair votes yes. Motion passes four to one. Thank you all very much for that. I know how difficult it was. Next item on the agenda, 1254-1264 Linden Avenue, the 18-month extension for submitting the final plans for the retail center. Mr. Hibansky, you want to bring us up to date on this extension? I don't think we have anything in front of us on that.
Well, everything was sent in everyone's package, you should have received.
Yeah, I, I just probably, I know the others, but why don't you bring us up to-
It was basically the last approval that was given to them-
I did see that, yes.
-on July 29, 2015, from Gary Lawrenson. Basically explained to them, they have until October 19th to either request an extension or to submit final plans, so they are here requesting an extension.
Any questions?
Yeah, that, I have, that's on Linden Ave., right? And then it seems like we have another extension and later on coming up, so I'd like to go to, right to Attorney Florick and ask him, why do we have all these extensions? How come these buildings never get built? I mean, are they waiting for money or something? Because we need to, I mean, there's, there's a list of stuff we've approved, that's all.
That's possible. There could be a number of reasons for it. In bygone days, zoning commissions and ZBAs used to attach sometimes a condition, and based on the zoning regulations, it said either had to pull a permit by a certain date, or if it's a variance, it would be null and void, or special case approval would be null and void. You really can't do that anymore, because case law has basically said that if, once a variance is granted, that means that it's, it's, it's good for all time. So you can't put an arbitrary time limit on it and say, "Look, you have to do this by such and such a date, or else it's null and void." There is case law now with, with special cases, which shows the same philosophy. Although, in a special case, while I think it's true, if a special case has been approved, it, it, absent any material changes in conditions, it's probably good for all time. But don't forget, in a special case, there's a lot of criteria that have to be met. And so if that criteria changes, the special case can be revoked, but not simply for the passage of time. So you see this, I don't want to say it's common, Jay, I don't, I don't know if you would say, but, but you see it a lot. And it's probably due to market conditions amongst other things, or perhaps it's the financial condition of the developer, or the developer is busy doing other projects, or it's market conditions at the time. So it could be any number of reasons for the, that the request for the extension is given.
All right, because, because then it could go like, let me see, how could I put this? There's certain taxations on apartment, apartments, so let's say you're gonna put an X amount up over here, every apartment is getting taxed on roughly X amount of dollars, so maybe they're waiting for a different ruling, or-
Well, that conceivably could be another reason. I, I don't, I think there's any blanket reason, it, it's, you know, it depends, it's case-specific to the individual.
Because I know, like, a bordering town on their apartments, there it's like $27,000 that they figure for an apartment. So if you're putting up 400 apartments or whatever, they figure, the builder figures roughly, that's what the taxation's gonna be on there. And I don't think ours is at 27. I think it's a lot more than that, so.
Could be any number of reasons.
Number of things. Well, I'm just saying, because there's so many of these up.
We can give continually, continuously give them extensions.
There's no limit to the extensions?
No.
No.
You don't have to grant an extension, but-
I mean, if we say no, then nothing gets built.
Well, I think that's the thing. And I think if you see something come back four or five times with no explanation, at that point, you could say, "All right, either the next, you know, the next time, if you come back for an extension, we would like an explanation as to why."
If there's a hardship, and you're just trying to get money or something.
Well, many, many of them that I know, we've-
Can we ask that?
You could ask that.
Well, you certainly can.
Good, yes. We should get an explanation.
I, I don't want to bring something up that sticks in my craw, but members of this board may remember that I argued vociferously against granting an extension to a certain project where they had missed the deadline.
Yes, you did.
And this board still granted the extension, so to, you know-
I sided with you, Attorney Florick. Remember that, obviously, only one.
So-
We want, we want the town to move forward, and we, you know, I mean-
Folks, folks, yeah, let's, we're getting into the weeds. A lot of these extensions, they purchase the property, they're waiting for market conditions to get better, all right? That's usually the bottom line. We should ask for an extension, especially if we've seen them come back several times. The problem is, it crosses boards. Thank goodness we have Lynda here and, and Mr. Fuller when he's here. There's some crossover. But most of these are just waiting for market conditions to improve, or buyers, other buyers to come forward. It would be my recommendation that unless we see something egregious, that we move these forward, because it really doesn't give us any benefit if we deny it, that means the applicant has to go through the approval process all over again, and we still get to see it in front of us.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Peppin.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Juliana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anybody opposed? No one opposed, motion passes. Okay, this next item on the agenda, I'm gonna need to recuse myself. This is 3044 Main Street, a preliminary review of the prior to submitting final plans. I'm gonna ask Vice Chairperson Lynda Peppin to take the seat. Yes, thank you. This is final plans for you to review. It does not require a vote, but these are, they're looking for your input-
Do we have those?
-to these plans, so when they resubmit them, they have some guidance from you of what is approved or acceptable.
Where, where are the plans?
They were in a thing like this.
Yep, they were sent in your packets. This, this is it?
That's it.
Oh, okay, there's nothing more?
That's it.
Fantastic.
That was sent last-
That's all they need, this one, when you go up there?
Yes.
Where's the site plan, the landscape plan, all that?
The site plan, if it's not, it should be on there.
No, this is all I got and delivered to my house. Where's the rest of the plans?
This came prior.
Prior.
So you could take mine. Yeah, take mine. That came for August 30th thing.
You got an actual landscape plan, site plan?
Whatever I just gave Commissioner Peppin is what I got from that date.
Dated August 16.
I don't...
Ask, ask.
I have a big set. It was in your packet, but I have a big set that you can borrow.
It's all I have for this project right now. Thank you.
So discussion on 3044 Main Street. Do we have a discussion?
I can give some input if you want and look at the plans.
From you?
If you want.
Administrator Jay Habanski has some input on 3044 Main Street.
So this is just for us to approve the final plans finally, no?
No. This is a preliminary review. There's no voting. This was submitted as a courtesy to the commission because they've actually improved the design from the approved plan for the affordable housing project at 3044 Main Street. They have reduced the number of units from 57 units to 39. They've reduced the parking from 76 to 69. The front elevation, just in terms of the design of the overall site, is significantly better, and I cannot emphasize significantly enough. The facade is significantly better than the original approved plan, not to insult the first plan, just that this one is far better. There are much more architectural features on it. The landscaping is far better from the rear and both sides, but in particular, the front facade, which to me is the most important, is that's the calling card for this property from the street in a particularly highly visible area in town. So in terms of what they've submitted and looking at the original plan, which was before my time, I'm very happy with what's been submitted.
This is the front?
Correct.
This is Main Street. This is the underneath...
The front elevation is what you will see driving by on Main Street.
Any discussion? Anybody else?
Where's the landscaping and the rest of the building besides just the... I see a little bit on the right side elevation and the front elevation.
Well, that's it that we have on these plans. Like I said, this is a preliminary view. This is not... You're not voting on anything. They're going to submit final plans for your review after this.
Yeah, but that I understand. It's preliminary, but in order for them to submit those final plans, they want, you know, the commission to discuss it and to get our opinion on it. So what I'm asking again, and I'll ask it one more time, is where is the rear elevation of the plans? So I could see what the back of the project looks like.
It's on the set of plans that I gave you right there.
Okay, and is there a landscaping plan for that? Is there anything abutting it?
Nope.
There's nothing abutting it whatsoever?
Now, can we make a comment for them like...
Absolutely. That's what I think we're here to do.
We can make a list of things that we want to see in the final plans.
Okay. Again, do you see a rear elevation?
Check one of the last few pages.
You can't see the property itself. You just see the building.
That's what an elevation is.
Okay, so show me a site plan.
Site plan? Uh, let's see. You have that. Let me see.
Show me abutting properties on the site plan. I don't see any of that.
That's going to be submitted at the final plan. I can only give you what they give me, Scott, okay?
Well, Scott, what we can do is we can make, you know...
Thing is, I don't know... I don't know what other people are looking at. Like, I don't know the property itself. I'm seeing the building, and I'm seeing landscaping right in front against the building, but I'm not seeing the actual property.
Isn't this the property where it's right next to the post office? And then behind it's the police station? So there's just a little hill there with a little thing there, and that's all they... That's it. So nobody is going to see the back half other than the police station.
And that's my question. What is it abutting?
The police station headquarters is in the rear of the property. One of the reasons or one of the problems with this particular site plan is it's very narrow. It's a long cigar-shaped piece of property. And it may be that you don't see shrubbery or landscaping on, let's call it the northern side, because that's the fire lane. You're probably going to need every bit of that space for the fire access to get down into the back of the property if there was a fire. So that may be a reason you don't see it on there. It may not be... There may not be any intention to put it there.
And again, I'll say it one more time. This was... They just wanted to show you the changes that were made to the facade, the parking and the number of units. That's it. They're not looking for any comments on anything else other than that. You may have more questions, which I certainly understand, as I have more questions myself, but they wanted to show you prior to submitting the final plans what their immediate changes were.
So there was a reduce in parking, a reduce in the units.
And the significant facade changes.
And the significant facade change. Is the type materials being used and an actual change to the structure? Okay. I didn't get to see the original plans. I wasn't on the commission, and this is, I mean, we're dating back here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have you come in and take a look at the original plans. I have them in my office. Looked at them today.
Did the height change at all? The height of it?
No, I believe it's actually... I believe it's actually shorter than it originally was because it's now a parapet wall and it's not a... That has cornicing basically now, which is a much more desirable design as opposed to that whatever pitch roof that they had prior.
So it's what? It says 41 and 11 and a half. So it's about 42 feet tall. Okay. So four stories. I want to know, is there any green space? I have questions like that. Is there green space? Is there place for people to...
Sure.
Have like a yard or have a barbecue?
Don't forget, this was an affordable housing project. So, I mean, yes, I mean, you're familiar with what they did with James Farm Road.
Affordable housing doesn't mean we make it terrible for them to live either. So, you know, don't tell me...
But that's not what I'm suggesting.
Don't forget, it's an affordable housing project. You know, affordable housing isn't a terrible place to live. So is there any kind of green space here for people that are going to live here? I see 40 units.
Scott, you know where our office is. I'm surprised you haven't come in and looked at it yet. I mean, you know where our office is. We've already talked about this.
On the original... On the original, I don't think there was.
Commissioner Peppin, you were here for the original.
Yeah, there was no open spaces.
No open space. Okay, great. Thank you for answering my question. Appreciate it.
And you can come look at the plans in our office whenever you'd like. They're there for you.
If you think that we need an open space area...
I mean, 40 units, I would say...
To the left of it is where the...
You'd probably need a little bit of green space, I would think.
Well, to the left of it is going to be the driveway or the, like, the paver area for the fire and all that, right? To the left of it.
Yeah, as I recall it, the plan called for grass pavers, I think, down that fire lane.
Grass all the way along down the side and all the way out. The most amount of open space is to the northern, the northern perimeter of the property, which is roughly about 20 feet? 20 feet by about 420 feet, the front page.
It almost has that colonial look of that office building for St. V's, right? Is that kind of...
What's that?
The office building for St. V's that's over there, up a little ways. It sort of has that same kind of colonial...
Sure, it certainly has more design features put into it.
I'm not crazy about the color of the... So these are all things that we can submit, Scott, that we need to see in the final plans. Am I correct?
Sure.
The thing is, what I'm trying to say is if the developer's going to come back with a final site plan for us to approve, instead of sending them back and forth, back and forth, I want to get everything out now. So when they do come back, it's a final site plan with all of our concerns, not just about the reduction of the height or the reduction of the units. I want to talk here about green space. I want to make sure there's an area for kids that are going to be living here. You know, instead of talking about that at the time of the final site plan approval, why are we not talking about it now? That's what I'm bringing up.
Because they weren't given to me. I understand your concern. I can only give you what's presented to me.
Let's save the developer from us sitting there saying, "Well, you know what? We're not going to table this right now. We're not going to discuss it." Come back next month. Let's deal with this now, so when they do come back next month, we're ready to make a decision. And they have everything to give to us.
Again, keep in mind, when you consider this, that this property has a history to it. It was an original plan. It was denied. There was a final plan, which, or proposal, which the commission granted with conditions. It was appealed by the town. It was appealed by the developer. The decision of the zoning commission was upheld by the court minus one or two of the conditions that had been imposed. One of the most contentious issues that was before the commission and the court was this fire safety lane. Again, keep in mind, look at that plan. It's a very narrow lot. It's a cigar-shaped lot. It's very, very narrow. So when you talk about green space and things like that, there's not a lot of place you can put it on this particular, on this particular site with what was proposed and approved by the commission and the court.
That happens when you shoehorn as many units as you can into a small property.
I fully agree with you, but unfortunately, the 8-30G allows for that to happen. And that's not going to change until the legislature wakes up and actually does something about it, you know? You asked about maybe picnic areas, things like that. I don't know that there's room. I think that although there's grass pavers on that north side, really, I don't know that you can set anything up there because, again, that's meant to be the fire access lane. That's the way it was portrayed before the commission, and that's what the commission approved. So it's very problematical from an open space point of view on this particular lot.
Jay, you have anything else on this that you said it was only that the parking spaces and the units are down and the architectural has been beefed up to make it look a lot better than the original?
Said they added more windows.
Did you... In windows? That was it? Basically, it was the four things?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I went by that lot just as I was going in going, "Another one." And it is a tight lot. I understand where Commissioner Posner's coming from too. I mean, it would be nice, but I find it hard to try to fit anything more in there than what's going there, and they're already...
Maybe it needs more of a reduction.
Should... We could make a suggestion that in the final...
You can suggest it. Remember, however, that the zoning commission approved with a certain number of units, and the court upheld that approval. So you can't go back and rewrite that. That ship has sailed.
Can we make a suggestion, Jay, that in the final plans, could they make sure they have details of more plantings and a green space if there's a spot for it?
Absolutely.
Any other concerns? I mean, generally speaking. I know.
So what do you need here, Jay? Like a...
There's no vote?
No vote.
This is only... This was only discussion.
So those are the two things that we would like Jay to pass on before?
Recommendations.
Recommendations?
Yeah. Sounds great to me.
Say that one more time. Recommendations?
Or just concerns that we have in the final plan?
You can ask them to look at more open space or whatever your other considerations are.
And more details of the plantings.
I mean, obviously, they don't have to do any of that. I'm just saying, it'd be nice if they just listened to our concerns a little bit and tried to work with us and see what they can do before they come and submit the final site plan.
I will convey that to the developer so that when we get the...
I think we already did.
I will convey that to the developer so the next time they submit, we will make sure that they at least have that feedback from you all.
Is that all the discussion on 3044 Main Street?
I'm happy with that. I mean, I'm sure that the developer's already heard all of this, and I'm sure he'll come back and appetize us.
Ms. Phillips, I think you can come take over the...
I need those plans back, too.
Oh, I was just looking for that. I was just saying... I know, but I was just going to put it away, and I'm all over to go. Oh, I know.
Okay. Last one on the discussion list is 170 Orno Lane. They've been before us before for an 18-month extension. I think the last one we gave them was a six-month extension.
Another extension?
Another extension. Well, we only gave them six months the last time. This is the one that Mr. Florrick had just mentioned not more than five minutes ago. So this time, they actually have come back on time to ask for an extension. So with that...
I make a motion to approve the 18-month extension.
Motion has been... Motion by Mr. Posner, seconded by Ms. Bradley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I like that. All right. Is there any campsite review plan? Nothing that we have at this point. Zoning enforcement study or complaints? We have one down to follow up with, which is 444 Ferry Boulevard update. Mr. Banski?
So I believe the zoning enforcement officer's been in touch with Commissioner Posner where the complaint... It originated with someone in the community. They had given it to you, and you had brought to our attention.
Yes.
So I'll just read through the report quickly. It was inspected June 21, 2016, and the initial order to comply was sent out June 27. The order was to remove the vans and remove a sign from the front. Progress was made upon multiple inspections. At some point, the progress had stopped. We received some additional complaints. We received the second complaint from... Commissioner Posner received a second complaint from the community and was brought to our attention on the 30th. A new order was sent. All the orders are attached. You should have received them all in your packets. And they were given until the 9th to have the site completely cleaned up and resolve all the issues. As of today, I believe it has not been done unless something's happened since 4:30. But they had to last Friday anyways. It's already in the town attorney's hands, so they'll be handling it from here on out.
So Attorney Florrick, would you be able to tell me what the next steps are so I can at least let my neighborhood and my community know that 444 Ferry Boulevard is being taken care of?
If there is a violation that's found by the zoning enforcement officer, he will normally issue a cease and desist, that it'd be cleared up within a certain period of time. If it's not, the next step is usually a show cause order in court or an injunctive action to attempt to get the court to order them by court order to bring the property into compliance with the zoning regulations, whatever the violation is. In addition to that, we usually ask for penalties because the zoning regulations contain a per day penalty for every violation per day. And so it's usually commenced by a lawsuit and resolved in that manner.
Okay, now, I had read a couple of days ago, I'm trying to see where I read it on here, but it said that nobody is now living in that trailer. That is absolutely untrue. Two days ago, I saw people in the trailer at night. There are still people living in that trailer.
And I certainly, I do not doubt what you see, but, you know, we have to operate on evidence of what we see upon the inspections. When we go to court, we cannot take second-hand evidence from someone else. It has to be witnessed by the zoning enforcement officer, so.
All right.
I certainly believe you that there's someone living there.
At this point, it becomes a public safety matter where we call the police because, I mean, one of them is a child.
But it's in the attorney's hands at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that a recommendation we make to you?
Well, to the town attorney's office. I mean, I'll convey that. I'm not sure which attorney is handling this particular file.
Okay. You know, I think there's a child involved on that property. And my concern is, you know, you got a child living in a trailer on a busy road.
I understand.
Okay, my question, and I have for Mr. Florrick, is it's on our agenda. At this point, since it is now in the town attorney's hands, is there any actionable items that we can do or can we strike it from our agenda?
You can strike it from your agenda. It'll be handled now through the zoning enforcement officer and the town attorney's office, of course. You can always ask for, you know, an informational report. Of course, you can always ask for, you know, an informational report. But jurisdictionally, it's in the hands of the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to be able to strike this item from the agenda. Do I have a motion to strike?
Motion to strike.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair accepts, motion passes, anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. We do not have, oh, the only thing I wanted to add to that, and I already sent out the letter. Everyone should have gotten the letter that I sent about Hamilton Avenue. Thank you, Linda, for getting back to me. If there are other issues like that, I will continue to do that as well. All right, I have a couple of other things I think that has come forward in a formal action. Okay? Number five is the accessory apartment applications. I don't think we have anything at this point. Sediment and erosion control applications? Nothing at this time, right?
No.
And now we're going to move into planning projects. We have, the first thing on the agenda is Greenway. Ms. Pepin, you want to give us an update?
Sure. Traffic Authority's going to meet on September fifteenth in room two thirteen about our Elm Street project, which we wanted to let traffic only park on one side and give the bike lane on the other. So they're supposed, this has been going on since March. They were supposed to make a decision in April, and here we are in September. So hopefully, they will do that on Thursday.
Very good.
Yes, I have on that.
Okay. Anybody else that they want to add or any questions? I want to add one thing to the agenda just for today, informational. Mr. Urbanski attended a, basically a regional, I think it's called coastal resilience program. Why don't you bring us up? It was, I went, I, for the record, I did attend along with two members of the planning commission, Papaduski and Harold Watson. But it was an excellent program, and I thought it would be good for Mr. Urbanski to tell you a little bit about it.
First, I'd like to thank you for coming because we had, we were the only town that had commissioners or any residents come to look at the plan, so.
Really?
People were very impressed that you were there, so thanks. It's always good to have the support. So what Chairman Phillips is talking about is I've been participating in a regional resilience framework for not only our region, but the entire coastline of Connecticut. The, there were kind of two programs that were under this umbrella. One was a fifty to one hundred year, one hundred-year plan that each town looked at, that were the most important in relation to sea level rise or climate change or whatever the town happens to face in terms of climate events. The Yale team looked at our most vulnerable portion of Strafford, and it was basically southern Strafford. It was our industrial area along Lordship. And then the high-density residential neighborhoods to the north. Could you give me a couple of streets? They're escaping my mind right now.
Actually, yeah, I can't.
Cedric?
Cedric, up to South Avenue. For those who, you all pretty much know the South Ave. The way, the way the maps, they had some storyboards, the way the maps looked, you had Lordship, with certain parts of Lordship were dark blue, which was the most likeliest areas to flood. The next region, and it changed in color, went from Axis Road up through about Bird's Eye. That's, Bird's Eye is where this Johnson School is and so on. More flooding, but not as much as the Lordship. So as you go further away, it lightened. And then it went up to South Avenue where it was most infrequent. And after South Avenue, going up to Hamilton, there were just pockets of where there was water collection. So the purpose of it was to look at where the depth of the flooding might, and this is flooding not from rainwater, but from an actual storm event where, you know, it would come from the ocean, how deep it would penetrate and what kind of damage we might want to expect and what properties would be affected. And it was very interesting to see that, and I'm doing this in a very general way, that some of the areas that the town of Strafford is focusing on for new development, all right, the area that hasn't been developed as much, rests largely in the most flooded or potentially floodable areas of town, which was very interesting. And it's a catch-22 because as we look forward to try to raise our tax base and encourage development in our business community, the land that we have available, which is along the Axis Road corridor and Lordship Boulevard corridor, is probably the most floodable area that we have in town. Now, that being said, when we say most floodable, that projection was looking out, you know, fifty, sixty, eighty years out. That doesn't mean that it's going to happen tomorrow. But as, if the sea, as the sea rises and erosion continues, that is one of the projections that they looked at. And of course, the purpose of it was to look at what we can do to mitigate some of that, put some better planning in place to see how we can encourage businesses to either build with that in mind, residential housing to build in that in mind, and programs that we might want to consider to help residents who have homes in those areas. So did I give that a good summary?
Perfect. And, and that rendering that they gave us, which basically talked about elevating some roadways and using roadways as protective dykes for some of our, for some of our neighborhoods, those ideas will dovetail into the coastal resiliency plan that we are in the process of wrapping up in the next few weeks. I'm actually waiting for the final copies right in the next few weeks, and then it'll get adopted by the planning commission. So we're really excited about that. The, the other portion of the workshop that Chairman Phillips attended was basically a project that we had been designing with the Nature Conservancy in order to compete for grant money to design a wetlands restoration project along Russian Beach where there's rapid erosion that's happening along the coast. And we were told that we have an excellent chance at actually winning the implementation money. It's a very low-hanging fruit, really completeable project at no cost to the town. So we're really excited about that. And that's basically a combination of reef balls and stone toes that are out into the water. It doesn't affect the beach line other than it's going to start to allow the native grasses to grow back there instead of having rubble beach. So we're really excited about that, and hopefully, we'll hear back from that pretty soon.
Any questions? Before I forget, just for your FYI, in my other hat, sitting on the Strafford High School construction subcommittee, as we build the school across the street, we're going to have the land tested, the soil tested to see if it's reusable in any way. Depending on what those tests came back, there is a possibility that we might be able to reuse some of that soil elsewhere in the town if we don't need it for the fill at the school. And I suggested that we might want to look at using it to replace some of our erosion along our sea coast. It's something just to keep an eye out for.
Sure, and I've done some coastal restoration projects in the past, and I think it's a great idea to present to the Army Corps of Engineers and deep. They're very particular about where they take soil from, but if it's clean, you never know. I would certainly suggest it.
It, it's just a thought. We have also other areas of town that we might want to look at it. But after going to that presentation and just for your, if you can put an image in your mind on Russian Beach, the soil erosion was just like cliffs where you see soil just being flowing into the water. And as it crept closer to the road, it was pretty sad. And the other point is, this project focused around Russian Beach. It certainly could be a model for what we use for other land areas that we have as well.
And that's the idea. This is a pilot program and to kind of, it's a visual symbol to the community that, hey, we're, this is something that we want to start doing, and if it gains acceptance, we'll keep competing for more free money.
Yeah, it's a possibility. Okay, moving on, unless there's any other questions?
Chairman, Chairwoman Phillips, before we move on to goal settings, that's where we're moving?
Yes.
Can I bring up something constituent concern?
Sure.
Uh, okay. Lately, social media and also contacting me by private messages, I've been getting messages about the Cumberland Farms over off exit thirty-two. A lot of people concerned there with the traffic, the congestion, the accidents happening. So I decided to go out there the other day, and I watched cars that were in Cumberland's parking lot that would make normally a right, because there's only a right turn from the parking lot to West Broad, heading down toward Barnum. I watched seventeen cars make an illegal left while I stood there just watching. It's a problem because there's a lot of traffic coming down West Broad, heading toward Barnum, then going up West Broad, heading to the highway or into center of town, then coming down Linden Ave, coming off the highway. It's, there's, and then the Dunkin' Donuts across the street. There's a lot of potential there for accidents. What can we do? And this really question is more for Attorney Florick. What can we do or who can we recommend to? One of the signs there is, is really covered by a branch of a tree, the one that says no left turn. And there really should be a second sign there on the other side of the curb cut, and there isn't. What can we do to make this situation better as a zoning commission? Can we recommend something to the traffic authority? What, what can we do here?
As long as the, again, you'd have to look at the approval that was granted, but as long as they're in compliance with that, that approval, there's very little you can do if subsequent events show that, you know, maybe other conditions should have been imposed. However, West Broad is a town road, it's not a state road. And Linden is a town road. So the traffic authority certainly has jurisdiction over that. And I, I agree with you because I've been at that site several times getting gas, and everybody that, not everybody, but most people that seem to exit onto West Broad take a left-hand turn.
There's no left.
Because the entrance to the turnpike is right there, and it heads into other parts of Strafford. So that is a real problem from a safety standpoint. I do think that the traffic authority is probably the one to address that in some fashion.
So can we, as a commission, make a recommendation to the traffic authority to investigate that?
Yes.
Then that's what I'd like to do. Do I make a motion for that, or do I just?
If, if you want it to be an official action at the zoning commission, a motion would be in order.
Hold your motion, one second, okay? I just want to give Mr. Urbanski a chance to weigh in if he has any other thoughts to you.
No, I mean, it seems like it's an enforcement issue, in my opinion, from the police department. And, you know, sometimes it helps to have, maybe go and talk to someone from their traffic division and say, hey, it sounds like that we might need some additional enforcement here for, to monitor it. And I mean, that, that's kind of what I would think would be the first plan of action, and maybe ask them to, hey, if there's a limb blocking some signage, you know, trim the limb.
Or, or just some additional signage. That's something possible we could do too.
Well, the additional signage definitely would be the traffic authority.
Yeah, that's where I think they need to come in. I think there needs to be additional signage in that area.
Yeah.
That curb cut cuts to the right, right? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's right in front of Cumberland Farms, and it goes to West Broad.
Yeah.
Not really. It doesn't really cut to the right. Yeah, not really so much. You could just go out there and just make your left. You know, it's not where it's bringing you over to the right where you really can't get over because the curb's on the other side of your car. No, it's, it's open, you could just...
Mr. Posner, Mr. Posner, would you be willing to write that letter if we give you, empower you to do so?
Yes, I would.
Then I would suggest that the motion be to enable Mr. Posner to represent the zoning commission to ask the authority, the traffic authority, to review it for additional signage and enforcement.
Should, should there be another sign put in there? Can we, it's overweight, right?
We, it's over as far as the zoning commission is, is again, as long as they've complied with whatever the approval was and any conditions attached, the subsequent experience, practical experience really doesn't enter into the picture. But this is an enforcement issue, this is a traffic issue. And the proper board or agency to address that is the, is the traffic authority of the town, so.
Yeah, because it seems like, I'm just hypothetically thinking here that somehow we missed something because we have all these other things coming up, and this is like, like when we just discussed, try to do things. Maybe there should be a sign saying exit Linden to ninety-five instead of them trying to make that left to get onto West Broad and then the right up the ramp.
Well, one of the things, Mr. Juliana, that, that we didn't discuss, but that whole area is right now under a traffic study by the state as they look at exit thirty-two. And it's going to be incorporated as part of that redesign whenever that happens. I know the state, it's a state project.
They're, they're breaking ground spring two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen?
They're going to redo all, from Nolton all the way over to the Cumberland Farms and then up.
Right, so it is going to be incorporated that I think Mr. Posner's idea thought was that in the meantime...
In the meantime, I think we need to do something now. Like if, if we can put a Band-Aid on it until the DOT and the state gets in and does what they need to do, let's, let's see if we can try and do that, make a recommendation. I do like Commissioner Pepin's idea of the whole, well, does it have the right turn into the curb cut? That would stop people from making a left because if you make a left, then you're hitting curb.
Yeah.
That they don't have. And that's something that the recommendation for the traffic authority.
Might bring this to their attention, so. With that, let's move along. Can we have a motion to empower Mr. Posner to write a letter to the traffic authority to bring this to attention, to look at it for signage and any other additional improvements?
Can, can he show us that letter before he submits it, or?
I have no, yeah, no, I have no, no problem giving it out, absolutely.
Can he email that to us, or no, or that's not?
I'm sure he can mail it out, it's up to...
Is that okay?
Yeah. I'll, I'll email you, I'll email you a copy of the, the letter.
Just want to limit as much discussion on that for Freedom of Information Act purposes.
Right.
I make the motion that we have Commissioner Posner right there.
Mr. Juliana, we got a tag team here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes yes, motion passes, thank you. Very good to bring that forward. Goal setting, and we've got a number of things on this list, and, and I've had some discussion with Mr. Urbanski about how we're going to tackle this list and the fact that we're going to need some help tackling some of this list. Before going into each of these items right now, there's, there's a couple of administrative things that I want to do to look at this as a whole. First off, we have a lot of stuff on this goal setting, and I'm not sure that we're all going to get it done in the hour or so that we have here, especially six, seven items. So one of the thoughts was is that we try to tackle each one of these one per month so that we can actually maybe come to a conclusion and move something forward. The second part of this, a lot of this requires some kind of research or collective information from other towns. For example, the marijuana, methadone and marijuana moratoriums. One of the things we had asked for is to look at what other towns are doing, what were their experiences with the ones that did have shops, what kind of laws are in place. At this point, without a planner, that responsibility has now fallen on the commissioners to do voluntarily. And reasonably, I don't think that any of us are either equipped or have the time as volunteers to take that kind of research on, to do the job properly. I think we would be glad to help, but that's an awful lot of work to take on ourselves. One of my questions, and I'd like to bring it to the mayor and the council if need be, and Mr. Florick, please weigh in because it might be something we can do through your office, is to see how can we get some additional help to assist us in collecting that information and doing that preliminary research? Before we get into it, can you help us with a little bit of how we might approach that?
At one point in time, I know that the zoning office made use of student interns, you know, from, from local universities and even local law school in, in order to do research and, and help move along various projects. So that certainly might be one consideration within, you know, because it provides work and help within the budget, you know? So it doesn't, doesn't require an outlay of, of money or a new budget line item or an increase in the existing line items. But that type of thing comes readily to mind. Certainly, the town attorney's office... Certainly, the town attorney's office can do research, but again, you want to be careful of too much of that, because you have to have a funding source. It's going to come out of, would be coming out of our line item, but still, is that the best use of that money? You have to consider that. So if you can obtain some assistance pro bono, for example, in researching it, that's one way to do it. Secondly, you'd probably have to check with the mayor. I'm not sure the answer to this, but I don't know if we're still a member of CCM. CCM was always a very fertile resource for things like, you know, how do other municipalities handle this? Can you provide us with some sample language for different zoning regulations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But I don't know if we still belong to CCM. I have not used it. I'm not sure.
We did last year. I don't know if our membership is up or even if it's been renewed. The other side of this is, is that we don't have direct access to CCM. I'm aware of them. The mayor's office does. Even the council members don't have access to it. So we would still need the permission of the mayor's office to get that. And I think it's usually even handled through the town attorney's office.
Years ago, we used to, and when I say we, the town attorney's office, we used to make good use of CCM. I haven't done it recently. That's why I say I'm not sure what our membership status is.
Okay. Let's approach it like this as an idea. As we go through this agenda and just review it, I would like, if possible, if you could look at where the town attorney's office could help us, and if there's additional funding that the town attorney's office would need to help us accomplish some of these tasks, to give us an idea so that we can make a request to the mayor's office or the council if it need be, as to what that might look like. Because certainly, one of the questions we will ask is, if it's not important enough for them to have this done, then we won't exercise our time to push it forward. But it's got to be important enough for them to be involved in it. And of course, we'll do as much as we can on our own. Does that seem fair?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Number one is signs. It was not a sign. I'm willing to put my name on it as the signs. I think it was something that Gavin brought forward.
I have something I like to talk about when it comes to signs.
Oh, good. You want to start? Because I have some thoughts, but why don't you start?
Sure. Okay. So over the past few days, I've been getting messages and people coming up to me, talking to me about election signs. So what I want to read is the zoning regulation for political signs.
We have it.
And I'd like to read that for record. Sixteen point eight point four, sign or signs for a political organization may be erected as follows. Part B, recommendations for erection and removal of signs. Number two, primary, special elections or referendum, signs erected not earlier than twenty-five days prior to balloting. Now, I've had many complaints from people in my district wanting to know why there are political signs up all around right now, when the special election is October thirteenth, and that's obviously, what, thirty days from now? So we have a candidate or a campaign committee breaking zoning regulations at the moment. Also, it says, "The maximum total square footage of any sign shall not exceed eight square feet and shall be located on privately owned land or in the immediate street right of way as long as the sign is a minimum of five feet from the road and fifteen feet from any fire hydrant." Many of these signs, and I've taken pictures, are not five feet from the road. They're right up to the road. And I think this needs to be addressed. So I said, "Let me call the blight officer." That's what I'll call. It's blight now.
Zoning enforcement.
No, zoning enforcement, or blight. It is blight.
It's not blight.
It's not blight.
Well, it was our blight officer that was putting them out. So what are we going to do here about, we have signs that are legally placed, that should not be placed, all around District Two currently?
Okay. I'll give you my thoughts on it. There's always been a lot of latitude that has been given to both parties during the political campaign, as long as it wasn't egregiously abused. And there's been some courtesy that has been extended, which I think needs to happen here as well. Sometimes the pettiness over signs is just way overdone, and is used in a manner that is irrelevant to the campaign. What I would suggest and would prefer, that the enforcement officials make note to the different campaign chairmans, ask them to be more courteous. But I do not think that we need to make this a zoning issue.
Because the only time things are made zoning issues is when the zoning commissioner has a zoning violation, correct?
What?
Because the only time things are made a zoning issue is when it turns out the zoning commissioner has a zoning violation, correct?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Everybody here has no idea what I'm talking about?
No. And if there is, no. And I'm not going to get into that now, Mr. Posner. We can talk about it offline. But at this point...
I guess the paperwork about my back deck and the zoning violation disappeared then from the office downstairs, correct? Okay, thank you.
We don't, Mr. Posner will talk about it after. I do not know about this. But we will restate that we will not, and we have, and it's really up to the political parties and their leaders, not to allow signage become ridiculous and used as political weapons. Now, what we should maybe look at is revising some of our statutes. But if there's a specific complaint, that's an enforcement issue. I can work with you offline and with Mr. Hibasky's office. But that's not, that's an enforcement issue. That's not a regulation unless we want to look at updating regulations.
Me personally, I don't care if the signs were put out there forty-five days ago. To me, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I don't care. But when I have constituents coming up to me and saying, Scott, you're a zoning commissioner, and I want something done about this, I need to come up here and represent my constituents.
Then we'll make note of it to work with the zoning enforcement. Now, what I'd like to do is talk about with signs, is lawn signs in particular, in this particular goal setting, is one of the opportunities, political signs included, is to look at how we can update our codes about lawn signs. We have an issue that not only is in the political season, but now we have for-profit businesses putting out lawn signs all over town, all right? Taking, being mixed in with nonprofit lawn signs. And of course, we always have the problem of people not picking up the lawn signs afterwards. And no one takes responsibility for it. I'd like for us to take a look at how we want to enforce, first of all, update our lawn sign codes. Maybe allow some public spaces in a limited period of time as an idea, where we could allow some political signage. And also, how do we tighten up our regulation for picking up signs and when they can be put down and when they can be picked up? These are just some ideas that I had. And I believe Mr. Forrester, when he put this on the agenda, that was some of his thoughts. Now, we have several other types of sign issues that we could also work on, but one of the ones that seem to be coming up most frequently is the crowding of signs around Hamilton, not Hamilton, Huntington. Huntington Avenue and Main Street, Broad Bridge. There's several places now where clusters of signs...
West Broad.
West Broad. Yeah. For whatever reason, they're showing up. I'm even seeing them along Main Street, up by Putney on the way to Ornoke. Everybody who wants to work at home or has their driveway sealer or something. This is something that I've taken an interest in, and I would like to be able to take a look at it. But I also now, going back to Mr. Florick, this is where we need some help, to look at how other towns are handling it. What are some of the opportunities that we might be missing, that we should consider? Obviously, there's an enforcement issue that comes with it. What kind of penalties and enforcements we could look at it? And us as a body now be able to take that information and craft it into some revised regulation that we could put forward. That's one of the suggestions in that. Okay? Anybody else want to add anything to that? Number two, the Armengin property. Jay, you want to give us an update or tell us where we are on that, if there's anything? The mayor talked about something last night.
They're working on drafting the text amendment for the property. We'll probably be seeing it in the next two, three months. Just basically, similar to any text amendment, they're basically going to lay out the development standards for the waterfront redevelopment zone.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Medical marijuana moratorium. This is Mr. Fuller and Mr. Posner.
Okay. Actually, Commissioner Fuller's not here, so I think we should really hold off until the next administrative session. What I do want to say, though, is that I have been doing research. I've been gathering information, and I've also made contact with the medical marijuana dispensary in Milford on New Haven Avenue.
Excellent.
So I have been working on this.
You get to go start.
And so we'll talk more at the next administrative session when Commissioner Fuller's here, and we can work together on it.
Okay. To add to the effort that you've been doing, would you appreciate or would you like some additional assistance from, again, the town attorney's office to look at now what some of the other towns besides Milford is looking at? And they just changed the law again, I suppose. They opened up the state's applications for growing locations. So you can now have, you had less, they had five locations previously that you could apply to be an actual grower. The state has opened that up now, so they're taking applications for more growers, which is good news for us. That might be something that would work for us. Again, there's only five locations right now. Milford does not happen to have a grower at this point. Yeah. But I do think it's something that we should look at. That's another area where we could use the help of either CCM through the town attorney's office to gather again what that experience might look like. And included in that is, maybe we can also get some feedback as, through the police department, if there, because everybody thinks that there might be some impact. I don't know if there is or not, but at least we can say that we looked at it and see what that kind of looks like. Does that agreeable to you, Mr. Posner?
Yes, that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to take that on with the same thing with three B with the methadone, same thing in mine. Okay? Parking. I'm not sure what the parking specifically. Mr. Fuller's not here, so let's just leave that there, if that's okay with you. All right? Recommendations to the town council, sidewalk repair, flooding issues, that's the one that I addressed with the letter. I do expect that there will be other opportunities, like we'll follow up with the traffic control. That's an opportunity for us to look at where we can help the town, look at specific issues that may not be necessarily zoning regulations, but that we can either provide some assistance, or possibly, we might look at what our regulations are to see if we could help mitigate a problem with an idea of a solution, rather than just identifying problems. Does that seem fair? Does anybody have anything else that they want to add?
Yes. I would like to add, you know, as it says here, other I'd like to add to it, TOD regulations. I think it's time that this commission, we have a new commission here, is open up those regulations and discuss them, and see what we can do to improve them and make them better for, you know, the district that it's in, which is District Two. There's a lot of concern with the residents in that district when it comes to TOD. And in my research, looking at the TOD, there are a lot of loopholes in there that need to be closed.
Do you want to narrow it down, or do you just want to look at a broad case?
I'd like to, oh, quite honestly, I'd like to repeal the TOD. I would like to repeal the TOD and start over.
I'm not willing to do that.
I know you're not willing to do that, but that's what I'd like to do, is repeal it. And I'm going to go public with that.
I'm willing to entertain some modifications to look at better inclusion of mixed use, how we want to handle parking in those high-density areas, which has become an area. Those are some of the specific areas that I'd be more than happy to entertain. Would you like to focus on any of those?
Those? My issue with the TOD is that, I think it was even Mayor Harkins that had said it was designed for mixed use, commercial, retail, to bring in business to Stratford. So far, under the TOD, there's been three projects that have come under the TOD, or are coming under the TOD. We've had Main Street, Christ of Episcopal Church, apartment building. Salsi Unit, Salsi Construction, apartment building. And now the 332 Ferry Boulevard, which is going to be a very high-density, three apartment buildings. Where's the business aspect? Where is business in it? Where's the mixed use?
That's what I said.
So what we need to do is, we really need to find out why these developers can come in and use the TOD for their advantage for all these apartment buildings, when that's not what the vision or the concept of the TOD was. So if there's enough loopholes for that to happen, maybe it's time we repeal this and start over. And if we can't repeal it, then we really need to seriously work on it and change these regulations, and quick.
There's two areas I would respond to that. I think there's areas that we can improve upon the way we have written the language to encourage more mixed use. But the other side of this is, we as commissioners are the ones that allow these projects to go forward without mixed use. And that is something that we have to take as a responsibility.
I worked, and I know I worked with Linda a lot, on the planning commission regarding the TOD. One of the main focuses of the TOD was to encourage transit, mass transit. That was the whole purpose of a lot of the apartment complexes. When we talked about mixed uses, we talked about, like, places on Barnum Ave cutoff that, you know, the little shops, making those someday mixed uses, and places along Main Street that could become, that existing buildings possibly tearing them down at some point and making mixed uses. But apartments and using affordable housing so people could take mass transit into the city and into New Haven was a big part of that. It wasn't just mixed, it was mixed uses for various reasons to start using transit, mass transit more.
And when the planning commission was talking about the TOD and figuring everything out, because I've talked to other people that were in planning, and also people that have been part of this TOD, that have all explained it a little bit differently than you. But when I ask you, did anybody consider that there's no school in that area?
Oh, yes.
Did anybody consider there's no school? Where are all the kids in these apartment buildings, in these high-density apartment buildings? Where are they going to go to school?
What came out of that?
And then I'm going to go a little bit further here about the tax base. It's going to cost more, it's going to cost more to send those five, ten kids to school than that building's going to collect in taxes and add to the tax base.
That was brought up, yes.
Yes, that was...
That's the problem. So what we need to do is, we need to figure out, how do we change this? Because those apartment buildings are not going to be adding to our tax base, especially when we need to pay thirteen thousand dollars per child to go to school, to a school that's not there, to send them across town to a portable.
Mr. Posner, your statement, I believe, is incorrect and without substantiation.
I disagree with you.
And I think most of the apartments were either studios or one-bedroom apartments, so that they would not attract the...
Attract young, single people who would contribute to the mixed use.
But that's not a guarantee, and we all know that.
Well, it's not a guarantee anyway.
I grew up, I grew up, my mother got divorced, I grew up in a one-bedroom apartment. There were three of us, three grids, three kids, one-bedroom apartment.
But if you were asking...
It's not a reality. You notice that and say that, there will be no children in these one-bedroom apartments.
Mr. Posner, if you were asking for an evaluation...
I've been asking for a double-ways TODS.
No, let me finish. If you were asking to say, let's do a review of how many children... If you were asking to say, "Let's do a review of how many children were a result of these projects," that would be fair.
They haven't been built yet.
Yes, they have. We've had some experience with eleven-eleven. I know myself, I asked how many children were in that complex, there were five, and most of them were toddlers. Two kids have been enrolled in schools. Now, we can actually look at all the other buildings that come forward.
TOD, though, eleven-eleven wasn't built under TOD regulations. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It was a TOD.
It was a TOD, the first TOD...
It was a transit center, that's right.
Transit center, but it... Not the current TOD regulations, though, because that was built before the regulations were approved.
Not at the current.
Right, but they're very similar, though. The changes between the two were very minimal. We're not going to debate, Mr. Posner, I think your point is, you clearly are on the record, you would like to see TOD revoked. We got that. I'm not willing to put that on this agenda. I am willing to look at, and I am been very supportive at looking at, where we can button up, or refine, some of the regulations that have, we've now, through experience, have learned, can be problematic. One of the areas that seem to have come forward, is that we need to look at how we can encourage more mixed use for the transit community, that works within the context of the community. That is something that has come forward, that would make it a bit more acceptable. The second part of it is, is that most of the residents have been a bit distraught of the fact that these projects come forward, and they don't know about these projects. And they would like to have more input into them. I think that's something we could also look at, is how do we include public comment and their experiences into the process a bit more effectively than what it is right now? I mean, there are opportunities for improvement, but to say that we need to gut it and start over, personally, I'm not ready to go there. But I can recognize that you are on record as being opposed to it.
Maybe you can learn me something here, opening this up and going through some of the things that Commissioner Posner wants. Would it be height issues? Because I noticed that I sat in on a lot of these with, being an alternate, and there was quite an issue with height, and being with a garage underneath, so I don't know if that, and then the other thing would be, it's supposed to have retail, nobody's doing retail.
It's mixed use.
I might be able to answer that for you. There are certain areas, they're called the TOD ones, that those areas that are identified that have existing pedestrian infrastructure in place, those areas are where mixed use or an activated ground floor is required. Places like Ferry Boulevard, places where they're on the outskirts, you don't want mixed use everywhere. You don't want it everywhere. You want it solely on your commercial corridors, and then, and then, the idea is, hopefully, once you get one on one corridor where maybe it's not required, then you have enough people there where a business may want to move in, based on the fact that there's a fifty-unit apartment complex somewhere, and the coffee shop says, "Now it's viable for me to go here." So they couldn't require it everywhere, but there are places where it's required, and there are places where it's not required. And there was a, there was a method behind that, that choice.
And just one more little thing, you might have mentioned it, that there was a van service at one time, but it didn't pan out for...
That's what I heard.
No?
That's what I heard.
Oh, okay.
No, I heard there was, town implemented, it had some sort of a van service at one point.
For the TOD to get...
Well, I think this was like ten years ago, rate is...
That's when they had the trolleys, right.
Right. The trolley system, too.
Goes back to last month, the thirtieth, I says, "We need to put the trolleys back."
No, seriously.
I love the idea of a trolley, as long as you can get enough people using it, and then...
Well, if we can get these TODs built...
I have a suggestion that might be, for the next administrative session, that might be help. And I would need both your help, your office, and the town attorney's office. I'd like to be able to review the TOD regulations, just a review, specifically looking at where retail or mixed use is ideal or requested, so that as a commission, we understand what those parameters are, and reacquaint ourselves with it.
And the commission, at any point, can say, "We want to propose a text amendment, and we want to require Barnum F from here to here is a TOD one, and an activated ground floor space is required." You could propose any text amendment.
How would that...
For anything. I just think that we need to be a little bit more considerate to the residents in this town. We are now in a post-WPCA, post-triple-A Stratford. And this was done before WPCA and triple-A, when, you know what? Now people have woken up and are more aware of what's going on in this town. And we need to be aware of that, and we need to look at those regulations and see, does it fit for today's Stratford? Even though it was done just over a year ago, a lot has happened in the past year.
I think what you're hearing is, we're trying to do that?
I'm just saying, that's what we need to keep in mind when we're looking at it, does it fit for today's Stratford?
Okay. All right, so I made a suggestion, that for the next administrative meeting, we focus on looking and reviewing the TOD regulations, particularly looking at areas where retail is suggested, if we want to look at any revisions, or any ideas, but certainly, so that we have a better understanding of what those intentions were. Is that acceptable? Do I, do I have an agreement?
I agree.
Okay. Why don't we plan for that? And it'll also give Mr. Florick time to do some research in the office, and let us know how we might want to at least move forward on some of those other projects, and what resources we might have available. Is there anything else, under other?
Yes, I have a question for Attorney Florick. Attorney Florick, can a commissioner that recuses themselves from a vote on a project, though isn't a budding property to that project, be able to comment, or have the right to comment, because it's their interest as an abutting property, to comment on a project that's in front of a commission that they would normally sit on?
I will, I will take a look at that. Ordinarily, if you recuse yourself from consideration in your official capacity, you're not supposed to take any part, then that includes discussion. However, by sitting on the board, you don't forfeit your constitutional right. And so if you've recused yourself, it could very well be that you have the opportunity to speak with respect to the petition, even though it's on a board, you know, it's before a board that you sit on. I'll take a look at that.
Great, thank you. If you could just get that in writing to the commission, that would be great. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made to adjourn, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion accepts. I'm sure no one's opposed. Thank you all for attending. And we close at...
Eight forty.
Eight forty, good job, everyone.